Good jobs to start.
Apparently not.
Good thanks, that's good news.
I know, please.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
If you all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. Um, we will start the Tuesday, April four, twenty twenty-three board meeting with public comment period. Do we have anybody from the public here to comment? Not looks so. That, we'll move on to the, uh, board meeting agenda for today. I would look for motion to approve that.
Mister Chair, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Johnson and second by Commissioner Olberg. Is there any discussion, any additions, Andrew? With that, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the board meeting agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Andrew, would you like to walk us through that, please?
I would be happy to. So today, we have approval of the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three board meeting minutes. Approval of the social services county and hospital accounts payable. Approval of the promotion of Brenda Boleen to full-time administrative technician effective April fourth. Approval of the hired part-time corrections officer Joshua Oberloh, effective, uh, level B twenty-three, step two, twenty-five fifty-six twenty-three fifty-six an hour effective April fifth. Approval of the hired full-time corrections officer Jonathan Happala, level B twenty-three, step one, twenty-two eighty-eight an hour effective April seventeenth. Approval of the hired full-time corrections officer Edward Rodriguez, level B twenty-three, step one, twenty-two eighty-eight an hour effective April tenth. Approval of the rehire of temporary boat and water deputy Tyler Hanson, level A twelve, step three, eighteen seventy-two an hour effective April tenth. And approval of medical director agreement with Watkins Ambulance Service. That concludes the consent agenda. I do want to note that there was two minor errors in the Watkins ambulance agreement that, uh, will be addressed in the final agreement that's, uh, going to be signed. One of them is just to clarify that the agreement is with Meeker County through the sheriff's office. There was a reference to the fire department, which was, um, inaccurate, it should be Meeker County. So both of those have been correct.
All right, are there any questions on anything in the, uh, consent agenda?
Mister Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item up, Andrew Letson, county administrator.
So I'm actually going to turn this over to Emily Wood from Wood and Rue to walk us through this item.
Morning, Emily.
Good morning.
Morning.
Alright, so I'm here today to talk about the Forest City Schoolhouse, uh, right over by Highway twenty-four. So I'm sure all of you have driven by that over the years. And, uh, the reason why I got involved in this project is because the county at that time Paul Verneig and Brandy approached me to help them with cleaning up this, uh, real estate issue that has come to light. Uh, over the years, and you can see this has been an ongoing project, uh, but over the years, it's been known and believed that the, uh, township of Forest City owned the schoolhouse. And when people started looking at the documents, they realized, oh, we don't have a deed. So if the schoolhouse is simple in the school's name, uh, rather than the township's name. And then we also had some additional issues with overlapping legal descriptions or gaps in legal descriptions. Which, it, you know, depending on the area, it's relatively common and we can deal with it. So, because we had some issues going on with this property, I sat down and started working on it. And we first got surveys done, which you can see in your packet. Uh, we have a survey for the description that, of the, uh, schoolhouse property as it currently, uh, is described. Which we did end up finding the deed from the schoolhouse, uh, to, or from the school district to the township. It was a nineteen seventy deed that ended up getting recorded fifty years after the fact. So they, they did in fact get their deed. So just a little side note there. But the, the dated description in that document is shown on this survey here dated for June of twenty twenty. Uh, and you can see that, you know, every, everybody, when we got the survey, we realized, well, the, the township doesn't own all the way to the road. So, which they thought they did, so that's another issue that came up. And then we also have a gap running between these two parcels here. The schoolhouse parcel and what I've been referring to, uh, as the bear lot parcel south of the schoolhouse. So, we, the approach that we're taking on this is called an action to quiet title. So during that court process, we will be asking the judge to find that the township owns without any contest to any of the other individuals that could possibly own this property for the schoolhouse and this bear lot. But in the process, we want to clean up the, these gaps that are around this area. So there's a second survey here with the proposed description being depicted here for what we're asking the judge to find. And this new description extends the property to the roadways. And it also, uh, grabs that gap in between that bear lot and the schoolhouse parcel. So it cleans up this area. Uh, so this is the proposal that we're asking the judge find that the township owned. Now, why is the county involved here? So the county owns property on the west side of this, uh, CSAT two over here. So that's where the county is an adjoining landowner. We also have the county with, uh, a possession interest in a portion of this property. The west ninety-two feet were utilized by the county. Uh, I'm not sure when it was, but at some point, there was an ice rink, uh, utilized by the county for community purposes over there. I only have knowledge of this because of Richard Dollar Shell and, so he's, he's kept me informed of what the community used over there and uh, that the county was the person behind that. And that was also why Paul wanted to clean this up as well. So, based on the county's, uh, use of the property and their presumed ownership of that ninety-two feet, I'm coming here today to ask the county to give a quitclaim deed to the Forest City Township. We can't name, uh, Meeker County in the quiet title action. Minnesota statute says that one political entity can't take land from another political entity. So we can't name the county in that action. So that's why I'm asking for a deed. Uh, just to remove any potential interest that the county has in this proposed description. Uh, now, from a roadway standpoint, the, the road, we would, this description would be subject to the current easements out there, so there would be no, uh, grab at the roads or any loss of ownership over the roadways if that's a concern on the county's part.
Clear as mud.
Yeah. This, this area of the county is very complex, uh, as I'm, I'm sure you looked at the summary that I had on here, but it, it is one of the older developments in Meeker County, so we're working with older descriptions. And because of that, we sometimes see these issues with overlaps or gaps in descriptions. Then on top of that, we're also fighting a body of water which runs right by the town, which moves over time. And then we also had twenty-four, which used to run through town and now runs south of town. So we're, we're fighting a couple battles here, but hopefully we're, we're going to straighten this out once and for all.
So Mister Chair, so word says it, you name people who have adjoining property?
Yes.
I, I didn't quite understand how they were involved. Is it just to inform them or?
Yeah, so Minnesota statute requires as part of the quiet title action that we name any of the neighboring properties. And, you know, it's more from a public policy standpoint that if your neighbor is fixing their property lines, they want to make sure that you're informed of it so they don't accidentally encroach on your property.
So it's information.
Yeah, it's informational, so unfortunately, we have to name the neighbors as defendants.
That's why I was kind of like.
It's, it's, it's a friendly act.
Yeah.
Term it friendly.
When I saw defendant, I'm like.
It's not hostile or?
Yeah, so, and the, the approach that the township is taking on this is that before we send out the scary, you know, you're being served and sued.
They'll have information.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll get ahold of them head at times so they know what's coming.
And they're aware of this already because we've been working on this for a few years. So it's not a surprise to them that we're trying to clean it up.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like, uh, every time the township has a meeting, there's always a request for, you know, updates on it, so the community is well aware of this issue.
Good, thank you.
So it just involves these eight names that are listed on your, you think that's the parties?
Yes, so we, I've identified the individuals that hold title and then along with their personal ID numbers. Uh, so I will be verifying that information right before I file with the court. Because unfortunately, well, unfortunately, people move and things change, so I like to make sure we're working with the latest information. The additional parties that could be named is that I'll also have to name any, uh, lenders out there. So if people have mortgages, I have to name their mortgage holder as well.
Seems so complicated for what is kind of a simple thing. I thought when Andrew asked me yesterday, I go, yeah, that's pretty.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of moving parts here, but, uh, you know, from the mortgage holder's standpoint, they see these pretty frequently. Uh, and the, uh, laypeople that are involved here, they're aware of the issue and they want to see this resolved as well. So I, I don't think there's going to be any turmoil here.
Okay.
Well, I'm just curious, did you say that we've been working on it for a couple of years?
Yes.
Is this getting close to the end of?
Yes, we, the, the end is in sight here, so I think we had the initial meeting with the county township and, uh, the school and myself back, it was the week that everything shut down for the pandemic. So that, that was our initial hurdle, you know, everything shut down and we couldn't do anything after that initial meeting. And then we were waiting for surveys and then the abstracting and then we found that missing deed. So it just, it, it's been one, a little, little hurdles in, in this project, but I do think we're getting to the end here.
And I assume Brandy, this is your thought, you've looked at it, it's all good?
Yes, 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 I'm encouraging that we move forward.
Okay, then I would make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a deed regarding three one five seven old casat two Litchfield.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Is there any further discussion or questions? Been a long time coming.
Yeah.
It has.
With that, we will, uh, hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of?
Resolution.
We got a resolution, that's Cory.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Appreciate it. Joel Rantham, you're next.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to, um, if you want to go over the, uh, the courthouse re, uh, re-roof project. We had a meeting on whatever, uh, February seventh and approved the design and bid, bid process. We did a pre-bid meeting on March second, um, we had five, uh, contractors. Um, out of them five contractors, three submitted bids. Um, we approved our, looked through the back bid package. Everything was, um, that, uh, included. There's the, um, the, the package includes the re-roof project. Um, we had some wall panels, it was an alternate one and then alternate two, um, was skylight. And as you can see down there on our, uh, on the bidding, um, you know, Granite City Roofing came in at the lowest bid overall. And, um, we would recommend that we go with, uh, um, Granite City Roofing for that project.
I only have one question. I, I always get a little leery when I see a two hundred thousand dollar difference. Is it apples to apples on these three bids?
Yes. Um, yeah, as we look through, I mean, all the material, they have to, they actually have to put out all the material and, um, we buy the material. But, um, they actually tell us what material they're going to put in and how they're going to do it. They also, I think, some of the reason might be for that is they also did our, you know, family service project and maybe, you know, there's some relationship there that they probably felt.
The contractor actually, so Brian Morrell, who was here from, um, Garland a couple months ago, uh, he and I had a conversation about this yesterday afternoon, because I asked that exact same question, you know? Are you sure there's no concerns here? And, um, he had said that Granite City came into this very aggressive because they had done the work at the family services building. They enjoyed working with the county and they wanted to do that and they wanted to fill in the space in the schedule. So they definitely came in with a sharp pencil because they wanted this job.
Well, I was curious, wall panels, I wasn't clear on what that means, wall panels?
Um, there's actually between the, uh, and the law enforcement center and the, there's that, you know, kind of the mezzanine part or that, uh, roof that goes up. That wall there, they want that, they want the metal panels put on there. They're like a metal, basically a metal sheeting panel.
And the skylight is a replacement, that's another?
Yeah, there's four little skylights on the top of the roof. I kind of was wondering if we're going to take them out or just replace them and then with the request of cost, I think at four grand, it's, that's not, um, extremely over.
I didn't know there was skylights, I guess, okay.
There's four little ones that are on each stairway, basically.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering about the huge difference in the bidding too, so. But we're confident?
I think we're fortunate that we, uh, yeah, they're, they were just aggressive and I think we hit it at the right time.
Okay.
And, and we've worked with them before, so we know they're a, a quality contractor.
Yeah, they did a great work over at the family service building.
Great.
And I think with the climate we've been in, that bids do seem, I'm hearing more variability in bids in general. I mean, just with inflation and stuff depending on when people are, and who they're buying from there. Seems to be more disparity in bids right now too, so.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve Granite City Inc. for the courthouse and law enforcement re-roof project in the amount of eight hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bredesen. Look for a second. Commissioner Johnson with the second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Do they have a date when they'll start or is it in there and I missed it?
September, um, yeah, it's down there, December twenty, in September, September. And that's, they figure like thirty-five construction days.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's decent weather, hopefully, that's.
Thank you.
Joel, was this the one where we were concerned about the odor?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, not that concerned, we went with. We had a discussion.
It was a hundred or?
A hundred grand was the estimate, but, um, but we decided to go with the, the smellier option. We'll make it work.
And we'll hopefully, we'll come up with some, you know, we're going to.
Mitigation.
Filters and things like that and try to shut air handle out.
Yep.
When we can.
All right. Thanks, Joel.
Yep, thank you.
No, we did not go over.
Oh, sorry.
Well, maybe not yet.
Pretty sure.
That's because we got a discussion going after the second.
I'll take the rap for that, Mister Chair.
All in favor of the roofing project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Have a nice day, Joel.
Sorry about that. Phil Schmalls, Public Works.
I am expecting a couple members of the DNR, so if you want to skip me.
All right.
Come back.
There's Greg, he's here.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Landes Director. This is one I got three items for the board. First one is a Horizon Cell Tower, which is located south in Kingston. You know, for those of you on the board back in two thousand nineteen, this was approved. Um, back then, but it's expired since, due to COVID and materials and things like that, I had to reapply for the same exact tower. Two hundred fifty feet in height. Support Horizon Wireless Services as well as three other co-locations. Eventually, they have to agree to that, with all these new towers to be able to support three other entities that want to locate on that tower as well. Then we have one gentleman south of the town who objected, or south of the tower about a mile away, objected to the tower. That's the only complaints we've had about it.
Did, did he say what his objection was or just that?
No, it just says, I have, I'm opposed to the construction of the tower and location identified in notice.
Okay. I mean, it goes straight up in the air, so.
I did, uh, I talked to Commissioner Chief of Biden, uh, just because it's in his district and he knew he wasn't going to be here today. I asked him if he had any concerns and he said he didn't receive any phone calls or any, uh, comments about it. So he said that, that any objections that there were couldn't have been, um, real strong, so. He didn't see any issue with it. So with that.
I'll move to approve the conditional use permit numbers one six oh four nine on partial thirteen dash zero three nine two thousand for a new Horizon cell tower. Located in the northeast, one quarter of southwest, one quarter of section twenty-seven. Township one twenty, range twenty-nine, Kingston Township with the conditions listed.
I have a miss, uh, motion by Commissioner Olberg.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item I got is a CUP for a landscaping project for Nathan and Robin Holstein. Property is located in the Shoreland District of Dunn's Lake. This project here is going to be, um, bucking fifty feet of riprap. Got ten by twenty paver, seventy-five foot of steps, thirty cubic yards of soil, it's about sixty cubic yards total, landscaping project. This is a very steep bank down in Dunn's Lake. We'll have to go through those different types of steps, they're pretty treacherous right now, so. Planning on starting as soon as spring or summer shows up, I guess.
I found it kind of interesting when I was reading it. You go out, look at these things in the snow, how do you determine? That kind of stuck out at me.
Yeah, it's a little bit tough to see the landscape, but you can tell how steep it is.
Yeah.
See the stairwells, still see the block walls and stuff like that exist. If they're bowed out, you still kind of look at that a little bit.
This year is no exception.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, it's worse this year, obviously, so.
All right, do we have any, uh, further discussions on the Holstein project? Now, I'd look for a motion.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the application for a conditional use permit to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the Recreational Development Dunn's Lake with the conditions.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bredesen. I hear a second.
I will second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion or questions on this project? If not, all in favor of Dunn's Lake, uh, landscaping project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next item I got is a conditional use permission for Nathan and Christina Thompson. They're a little Swan Lake Shoreland project and they're going to be seventy-five foot of riprap, hundred sixty-five feet of boulder wall, hundred sixty, seventy-six square feet of pavers, fifty foot of pavers, fifty cubic yard of dirt for about a hundred and twenty-six cubic yards of material. They're going to be using for this landscape project, a little Swan, again, this is a steep project.
All right, do we have any questions on this Thompson landscaping project?
Cubic yards are they going to move?
We've got a hundred and twenty-six. We've got a hundred and forty-five in conditions, we're fifteen percent over.
I just saw the recommended motion said ten cubic yards and fifty cubic yards.
More than ten.
More than.
More than ten, okay.
That's our ordinance, anything more than ten, the zone impact zone, fifty in the shoreline industry records.
Ten dumb trouble.
Have to read every word in the sentence.
Speed reader.
Move to approve the application for a conditional use permit to move more than ten yards of material within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the Recreational Development Little Swan Lake with the conditions.
A motion by Commissioner Johnson. Look for a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Olberg. Are there any further questions or discussion?
I, I have a question.
All right, go ahead, Julie.
We, we look at all of these over, over time. And we have the approval or recommended approval of our planning commission. But so many of them say that DNR area hydrologist has not commented on the project. I, I wonder why? Why not? Because we're concerned about water quality runoff, um, the upkeep and maintenance of the shorelines of our lakes. Why does DNR not participate in looking at these? Do we know?
Is, is some of it just certain criteria? I mean, the, you know, I mean, this one.
DNR know about all shoreline projects, they're know about it. Whether they comment or not, I guess. Usually the only times a comment that's in a flood zone.
A flood zone.
Flood zone.
A flood zone.
So that doesn't mean they haven't looked at the project or if they have a, you'll hear from them if there's an issue, right?
We do as we do.
I think that's a good thing. That means it's okay.
And if, then it's, yeah, if they had the opportunity to take a look at it.
At least that's how I look at it, yeah. I mean, they get the information and they make the decision, so.
No news is good news.
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, no.
For, for the landowners certainly.
Well.
Would think. If there's no issue with the, uh, project.
All right, thank you.
All right. Now, did we take the vote?
No, not yet.
Steve. Julie, that was your vote.
I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor of the Thompson landscaping project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we're gonna, thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Right? Right, and then I'm going to step back and Phil, you? Powers Lake Outlet Control Structure. Gentlemen, you can come ahead too if you imagine you're going to have.
Yeah, come on.
Pull up the chair.
You can sit there, Greg, I'll pull up the chair. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Phil Schmalls, Public Works Director, here to discuss the topic of Powers Lake and its outlet and, um, water control, I would say. I mean, your packet, there was a little bit of a summary of what we're looking at here with the map. Powers Lake is five miles north of Darwin, north of our CASAT twenty-two and historically it had an outlet control structure north of our state highway that held the water level up. That structure has fallen into disrepair, it's no longer functioning much if at all, I'd say. Um, so the DNR approached me, um, February about maybe replacing the structure and, um, going back to a situation where we're controlling the water level of the lake. Um, so this is Josh and Cory with the DNR Wildlife and basically we're here to, um, discuss the topic, feel the questions you may have. They're looking for county support on installing a water control structure north of our highway.
All right.
Yes.
Andrew, are you bringing something up there?
Yeah, I was just trying to bring up the map, but it's in your packet, so it's, computer's moving slow. You guys can go ahead.
Well, that's voting, though, I did want to touch on, uh, the, the question you had.
Sure.
Um, so I'm, I'm with the Section of Wildlife, Cory Netland, Area Wildlife Manager. Uh, Meeker County is one of my counties, I cover Candy Ojai and, uh, Chipwak County as well, but um, when those go to the area hydrologists, they end up sending it out around for interdisciplinary review, basically. So I do see every single, uh, conditional use permit from a wildlife perspective. Um, as long as it's done in a responsible manner, I don't see, uh, great, um, impacts to wildlife as far as that goes. So I rarely comment on the shoreline zone, um, soil removal or disturbance issues. Um, that said, I used to work for Fisheries as an aquatic habitat specialist, so sometimes I do comment on those. Once they go to the hydrologist, it's their job to compile all the interdisciplinary comments and provide feedback. However, right now, we do have a little gap in, uh, staffing as well. Ethan Jensen has, uh, taken a promotion and they just filled his position with the hydrologist, got that notice yesterday. So, um, I can assure you though, that we, we definitely do take a look at them and, and I do receive them. And, and like you said, uh, Mister Chair, uh, no news is good news, that's really, really the deal.
Yep.
Thank you.
So again, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Verification.
Again, my name Cory Netland, um, Area Wildlife Supervisor. I've been here for, um, ten years, I guess, but haven't been to this, this, uh, boardroom for quite some time, so, uh, thanks for having us. And I guess what we're, what we're here to talk about is, um, what, what I'd like to think is, is an opportunity for, for both of us, I guess. The, the water control structure that, that Phil touched on is, um, just a little bit north of where it says thirty-six inch culvert. That, of course, is through, um, County State Eight Highway, uh, twenty-one. And, uh, the water control structure is, uh, a wooden, um, And, uh, the water control structure is, uh, a wooden, um, I guess for lack of a better description, uh, timbers that are placed into the, the, uh, the ditch to basically make a, a wooden weir structure, if you will. But it's, uh, it's very dilapidated, falling apart, um, it's not holding the, the lake to the, the level that it was intended to, so. Um, and that work was done quite some time ago, not surprising it's failing, it was back in the late sixties, I believe. Um, so, we have acquired, uh, the, the area in red on the map there is a small wildlife management area, it's, I believe, four and a half, five acres, it's not, not big at all, but. Um, that landowner worked with pheasants forever who purchased that, turned it over to the state, and part of our interest was the potential to maybe look at management of, um, Powers Lake, which is four hundred acres. Um, maximum depth is just over four feet, I think it gets four and a quarter, maybe in, in certain spots, but. Majority of it, the average depth is three feet, and that's basically the difference between, um, the ordinary high water level and the bottom of that culvert. So there is potential to maybe draw that lake down and provide some habitat benefits that way. Uh, it consolidates the sediment, stimulates, uh, s- plant growth, uh, we see better wildlife use that way. But it also have the dual benefit of, uh, typically we're doing that in the fall, so when spring rolls around, we would have more flood. Storage capacity or more capacity within that ditch before it's leaving over the structure and, and down eventually to County Ditch Thirty-Six is what it leads to. That's a private ditch where it's leaving the lake, but roughly a half mile to the south is, is, uh, County Ditch Thirty-Six. Um, it's, you know, it's, uh, the permitting authority is again back to Eco Waters or the area hydrologist, so it's really, it's really up to them as far as, uh, the levels that we can. We can do things under, under a plan, but it's our understanding that, uh, they, that, uh, well, the, the number is provided by them. Their appropriate full service level is at ten sixty-three point six, and currently in the fall of twenty-two, it was, uh, at ten sixty-two. So, we're below that level and. An alternative or one, one, one thing is just to go ahead and put in a new, maybe a steel, we sheet pile weir structure. Um, the county could, has, uh, has the ability to do that on their own, but what I'm here to say is that if we work together, we might have a way to be able to incorporate stoplogs within that, where we could do drawdowns under a plan. And, um, maybe, maybe see to funding a, a, a large extent of it, perhaps with the DNR and, um, so just kinda. Feeling things out, see if there would be any interest on the county's end in, uh, a cooperative project that way, where we'd be, we'd have the dual benefits of, of, uh, habitat and, uh, water storage. But, um, then also restoring the lake back to, to what the permitting authority is, uh, looking for, so. Anything to add, John?
Yeah, and I would just add that this is all very preliminary at this point, we wanted to make sure that we came to you. Um, and, and that there's interest, I mean, we still need to do a lot of landowner outreach, you know, look at possibly doing some feasibility survey, design type work. But before we invested too much time or effort into it, just wanna make sure that there is some support behind it to look into it too, or some involvement by the county.
Couple of questions if I may.
Yeah.
Go ahead Paul.
Um, you said that, uh, the elevation was ten sixty-three six?
Yeah.
And now it's down to ten sixty-two primarily due to drier conditions over the last couple of years?
Well, due to, um, well, that and, uh, the fact that the, that structure, I bet it's, uh, at least a foot and a half of it missing. It's, uh, there's boards that are just kinda piled up in the ditch and they're not stacked in, they're, it's not a functioning structure, it's, um. Dilapidated is maybe an understatement.
Gonna, so, whose structure is it?
We're under the impression, we're under the impression that it's the county's structure.
Okay. Go ahead Paul, sorry.
Nope, that's right, so historically, when you look at this lake, what was the elevation?
So I believe, I believe that is that sixty-three point six elevation.
That's that.
So back in the, back in the sixties, when that excavation was done along the outlet channel and that culvert was put into County Twenty-One, then. EWR came in and said, alright, we lowered the lake too much, you guys need to put in a structure to maintain a certain elevation out there, and that, that's that elevation. Um, when we look at that sixty-two elevation, that was just to kinda give us an idea where water levels were at, but of course, last year it was pretty dry. And that was just the water surface elevation, we didn't do any profiles along the channel or anything like that. So, in comparison, that, that culvert, that thirty-six inch culvert under Highway Twenty-One is at elevation sixty-one. Water levels were at sixty-two, so there's a high spot in that channel somewhere that's probably controlling it, but, but the legal runout elevation should be that sixty-three point six elevation. So that's what we need to look to try to restore out there eventually.
How, the channel that runs from the culvert to the structure, how long, how long a distance is that, any?
I would be guessing.
Three hundred feet, five hundred feet?
It's not, it's not that long.
It's, it doesn't look.
Two to three hundred, I'd say.
Yeah.
Couple.
Yeah, and, you know, back to your question, I guess, you know, from our perspective or mine, as a wildlife manager, I'm managing, um, shallow lakes for the benefit of wildlife. The lower the better, as far as I'm concerned, but I can't just decide that I, I, I like it the way it is and we shouldn't do anything here, that's kind of, um. Eco waters, we have to work within the same constraints as anybody else from the public or, or county or something like that, so I have to apply for a. A waters permit, and if I apply for a permit saying I wanna just, uh, forget about all this structure business and pull it out with the way it is, I, I don't think we're getting that approved, so. But, um, we do wanna have the ability to get back down to that level, um, to stimulate the, the lake and the plant growth, I guess. Um, so to incorporate the drawdown capability to pull it down to the bottom of the ditch would be fantastic, and, and it's not something that we would probably be looking to tinker with year after year. You know, it, the hope would be you do it once and, and the lake remains in a clear water condition with, uh, good plant growth, uh, food for ducks, clear water. Um, for, for years, you know, four or five years, and then, once it returns to, cause it probably flips back and forth fairly easy, being a large windswept lake that, um. You know, there's, there's some stuff going on with rough fish getting in there and stirring up the bottom, but also it's, uh, some of that's wind driven sediment too, when you got a, a lake this size and an open landscape, it's. It's gonna stir things up just by being not particularly deep, so.
I'm just a little more sensitive to these, as Phil will, Phil knows, um, um. Changing culvert size and so forth does change elevations on lakes in many cases. Um, recently found some documentation relating to Lake Manuela, where flows into Stella, where that very thing happened, so. I just wanna make sure that, that all of our numbers on elevations and what will happen and how it's gonna happen. You know, that's why I look at history a little bit to see what has happened on this area before.
And I do think it would be important, like I talked, you know, doing some feasibility survey and design, trying to get an outlet profile, looking at some different options for different types of water control structures. You know, if there's any private tile that come into the lake possibly shooting those outlets too, to see how that would impact it. Like I said, this is all so super preliminary, I mean, we, we, we just don't wanna invest more time into it if we're just gonna get a, you know, if there was an interest, but. Um, if there is interest, you know, those are things that we can put in motion. Um, and what Corey talked about, so the way I see it, you know, with the outlet structure, there, there's probably a couple of options. You know, one option would be for us to work with you to try to put in some sort of a fixed sill outlet at, at determined elevation, so. You know, we can't manage it necessarily, it's just restoring whatever the appropriate lake level is, you know, based on what happened in the sixties. The other option would be to put in a similar type structure, but then have the ability to do some management with water levels. So typically what we would do, so, um, so let's say a fixed crest structure, it'd be just a sheet pile weir wall, so water has to run over the top of it. It would be a sheet pile weir wall with a, with a bay in it, that where there's removable stoplogs. So, you know, like the last two years, Powers Lake has looked really, really good because we've been in droughty type conditions, we've had a lot of vegetation, a lot of waterfall use out there, I mean, that's pretty, that's, that's what we're interested in seeing. Um, we can basically mimic that, you know, by using stoplogs, doing some management stuff, and, and there's a whole big planning process that we have to go through that would. You know, we would work upon with you and with property owners, but then, there's also a public hearing process that we have to go through too, to be able to manage a public water, we can't just go out and do it, we have to go through wildlife lake designation. Um, so we probably propose a couple of public meetings, a public hearing, it, it takes a while. But it, it's a, we've done it on a lot of other lakes, you know, in a lot of other counties, we, we do a quite a bit of management, so, and, and that's primarily what I do, I work for the Shadow Lakes Program, so. We help coordinate a lot of these projects and work with counties, work with partners, work with landowners.
Do you happen to know how many adjacent landowners around this one is, just?
I have a list, I didn't bring it, but there's five to eight, I'm guessing. You know, and, and obviously, the most critical one would be the one along the outlet there, um, you know, so we do own that property up to about the middle of the existing channel, but then the property owner, um. The left there owns some of it as well, so.
Have you spoke with that individual or?
Nope, we wanted to approach you guys first before we got too far.
So is there tillable land?
All around it.
All around it?
With, uh, yeah, a certain amount of buffer, I guess, it's on the lake.
What's a buffer?
Well, it's.
Do people hunt that, or duck hunt, or?
Yeah.
That's what, mainly?
Yeah, as far as, uh, the, the public land ownership there, I think it was, um, it's more about access to the lake and the ability to duck hunt on the lake than it is the land itself. I mean, somebody can pheasant hunt on that little piece of ground there, and they, they might, you know, but you better be the first one.
Okay.
Cause it wasn't very much there.
Yeah, okay.
I, I guess one of my questions would be, uh, um, you know, looking at the buffer, it's all pretty, uh, extensive. Tree vegeta- vegetation around it for the most part, but I'd like to know what the watershed is going in there, because you got some pretty major areas here that are draining in. And most of that land across the road to the north coming into that watershed as well, I'd just like to know what, overall, Powers Lake holds a fairly good, uh. Amount of acres of water.
Yeah.
And then my next question, after I'd, before I'd, won't make much of a comment on it, would be, um. Kinda, what do you, uh, who owns the weir, what do you need us for, I guess is my question, I mean, exactly. You, you want us, you want kind of our approval, but I'm not sure that you need it. And I, and that's, you know what I mean, what are we approving? If we say, yeah, go ahead, I don't wanna make that sound to all these property owners, yeah, go ahead, means that you're, you're getting a weir automatically, I mean, I. I'm a little concerned that we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here a little bit, if you follow what I, how I'm looking at that, so.
Yeah, I guess, uh, from our perspective, it was really what, what this, this engagement is about, is early coordination to just give a heads up for the most part, but. What we're, I guess, to get to the, the second part of the question there, what, what we need, um, from the county, I guess, is it's really the county's structure. So if we're gonna participate in any solutions to repair that structure, it's just the willingness that, to, to work with DNR towards, towards that end solution of the structure, and then perhaps. Um, we include provisions like, uh, we're, we're gonna be on the hook for, uh, routine maintenance going forward, it fills up with vegetation, or if, if we have a fish screen on it or something like that. DNR will be the one going out to take care of that kinda thing. Um, or you could say, you know, if we're not interested in partnership, well then they're probably, uh, that, that structure probably is still gonna need replacement, and that's not really my call, it's, it's a, that's our understanding, as Josh said it. Um, but, um, I've, I, I, I don't have any sort of, uh, an indication of when or, how, and, and if they're gonna be pursuing that, I guess, but. You know, the, the elevation, it, it was known by waters that it's, uh, in, in disrepair and something needs to happen. Now that, that hasn't, uh, gotten anywhere past that yet, but I do think that day is coming where they say, we've gotta, we've gotta get this back into shape.
Okay, and you meant they, who's they, who's waters?
Area hydrologist.
You know, just, just, so.
Division of Ecological and Water Resources, which is DNR, but it's their lane, not mine, so.
Okay.
It's, it's a different division within DNR.
That's what I was getting at, okay, so this has been identified by the DNR as, you know, in disrepair, gonna need repair, and, and you're just trying to.
And, and there's other things that can derail what we're talking about here too, we talked to all the landowners and, and, and nobody's vast majority are not interested in seeing anything happen with the lake, um, you know, then. We go to a public hearing, it's not gonna go well, so that's why Josh talked about, you know, some outreach and information to educate on what, what we could, what, what they could expect here if we're able to do a project. And what it, what the attention is with the project, and they, they've been highly successful in the past, uh, ones that I can think of. We don't really have anything in Meeker County, but we do have, um, Smith Lake is right over north of Quokato, and I know the Sauk Rapids Office of, uh, DNR Wildlife, they did a project out there and did a drawdown on Smith, probably. Probably pushing ten years ago by now, but they had outstanding success and it, uh, a lot of, a lot of use by ducks, much better habitat after that. Um, nothing but positive on that, and then more recently, we got a, we've, we've done some work in Candy Ojai County, but a better example is probably what we've done in Chippewa County with, um. Basically their only lake, Shakopee Lake is on Shakopee Creek, um, if you're from there, which I am, I call it Buffalo Lake, but. Anyway, they had a, a failing structure, need to replace it, and they got a grant to incorporate, um, slusky, it's basically a pipe on the bottom that we can pull, crank a valve and, and draw down the lake. Um, during periods of drought, because that one has a big watershed. Um, we're not gonna be able to be successful a lot of the time there, but worked with, uh, the Joint Ditch Authority, so it was really, uh, Swift Candy Ojai. And, uh, Chippewa County, and that project was just, uh, saw through to completion. Um, I had one other thing I was gonna mention, but it escaped me right now. Oh, watershed, sorry, I, we did look at that, and it's, uh, fairly, fairly small, do you recall what that is, I wanna say it was like three or four to one.
Yeah, it, it, so from a management standpoint, it's really attractive because it is a relatively small watershed that comes into it, it's a more manageable lake, you know, with its depths, with its watershed. And again, that's what spurred some of our interest in it, and when you look at LIDAR too, you know, it is surrounded by agricultural, a lot of agricultural land, but there are pretty, it, it does. Drop down into that basin pretty good along the shoreline, but again, that's, that's part of the stuff that we could look into, is some of the feasibility stuff that we would need to go to. And, you know, this is all very preliminary, like you said, get in the cart in front of the horse, you know, probably a little bit, I, I think basically what we're, you're trying to do is just. Um, ask for your participation in the project, you know, our next step would probably be to contact the property owners and hold some sort of a public meeting, you know, to see what their interests are. And, uh, it's kind of a blank palette too, there's, there's all kinds of different scenarios that we could pursue from here to, to try to place that outlet structure, or. Who manages it, how they manage it, I mean, it's all, it's all yet to be determined.
Well, and, and also line up some of that survey work to, to make sure that it is truly feasible, I mean, at, at first glance, it, it looks feasible to us, but we really need a profile of that private ditch all the way down to the county ditch, and do we have, do we have enough fall there, and. Um, you know, that kinda thing too, and then, you know, um, getting a handle on what tile outlets are around the lake and stuff like that too, there's, there's, uh, some legwork that way.
Well, that's, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see an elevation map, like myself, I'd like to see the elevations around it, so I know how much fall there is going into it, but. You're describing that there's, uh, evidentially plenty of fall coming into the lake, but. Uh, not, the other question I would have, if we say, no, we're not interested in participating, is this something that five years from now is gonna get replaced? Through, uh, through arm wrestling match with the, with the upper offices of the DNR saying, okay, now it's, this has got to be replaced.
So, I.
What are our options, I guess?
I think that, speaking out of turn a little bit here, but I, I think that structure has to be replaced regardless, cause that runout elevation has to be restored. You know, whether it's the county that does it, or us that does it, or whether we work together to do it, I don't know how we get there, but at some point. You, we probably have to look at restoring water levels of Powers Lake to what, to that sixties elevation, that old, um, that old, uh, restoration order.
Well, and that's, if we do it five years from now, if the county does it, we're gonna get that letter that Julie was referring to, and there is gonna be a hydrologist report attached to it. Um, you, you know, I mean, you're not gonna let us do it, put in a weir structure without your approval, so I, I get that, that's what I wanna know is what our options are today. If, you know, and maybe my questions are putting the cart in front of the horse a little bit for you too, but I'm trying to look down the road, you know. Um, I think we have to have a, yeah, have talked to the property owners, I mean, they're, they're the ones that are impacted.
Isn't that the next step?
Yeah, and to try to have a public meeting, and, and I think, you know, to your point, you know, we're coming in here too, because I think, we think the best option is try to work together and figure out a solution here that works for, uh, both the county and the state.
Uh, Brandon, did you have a?
Yeah, thank you Mister Chair. The county can, the county can put in their own.
The county can put in their own weir without having to cooperate with the DNR and and go through. Adjusting the water levels like outlined, correct? So they have that option, it would just be the county's obligation. The other question I have is, it's very common for me to read agreements between the state and the county, and there's not much wiggle wiggle room. When it comes to negotiations through the state side, so is it possible before there's any decision made by the county board? That you guys provide the county with an agreement that says these are the responsibilities, these are the roles and expectations, because. For me to advise the board to move forward on a project without having that background is slightly concerning about. Who's gonna take care of it, the liability of what's gonna happen, and I think it's fair to the landowners to know this information, so I'd be concerned. That the board would be saying, yeah, let's jump on board with this project without having, um, the expectations outlined pretty, um. Rigid.
And I don't, I mean, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't expect you to do that either, so typically what we've done with. With counties and with partners is a joint powers agreement, so it spells out the expectations, who's responsible for what. And we would work towards that eventually on this project, again, this is also preliminary, you know, basically getting it on your guys' radar. You know, so if a constituent calls, hey, what's DNR doing out here on Powers Lake, or why am I getting a phone call, or what's this public meeting about? You guys have an idea what's what's going on.
No, I I don't have a problem with, um, I I'm just not ready to make any decision as far as commitment on behalf of the county.
Well, I don't think you are either, right?
No, we're not asking for. We just, we just didn't wanna. We don't wanna spend time and resources on something that. Come to fruition, I mean, if the county just decided, well, we're just gonna go in there and put our own structure in, a rock ripple or something like that, well. And that would be fine, but I think mutually, we can come up with something here that would benefit.
So you wanna inform us, you want to have our support in moving forward to see where we go, and Brandy, you're saying you want. Something down in paper of what can happen or what the expectations are, is that's all. Sounds reasonable to me.
Well, I think, and I think we need to have, landowners have to have input on this, and I mean.
And I think he said that.
No, but I mean, before we make any meetings of any kind, isn't more informative.
Are we looking for emotion for anything?
Because if we're, if we're gonna go out and do some more exploration and stuff, you might, you might hear stuff and it.
Yeah, no, that's.
I appreciate that, I think that information is good.
If I may, um, we haven't heard anything from our county engineer, did you wanna weigh in on this or?
I try to stay on the road, I guess. You you know, I I'm just kind of along for the ride to see what we're gonna do with it, if it is a county responsibility, then. I'd be more involved, and that's like, I don't have any reference to say who's it is or what it is. Um, I'm just a conduit for the communication at this point.
So as far as the process, then you're, the DNR is gonna go out and communicate with landowners, get some feedback. Um, take a deeper look at the project and then bring it forward to the board, then ask, are you still in support of moving forward? And at that time, the board could then decide to say, no, we're not interested in this project, and then the DNR would vacate. Um, Powers Lake, is that accurate?
The, yeah, we would drop the proposal for a variable crest water control structure there.
Would there be any other, I mean, if if that project is, um. You're no longer moving forward with that project, is there another project that you'd be looking at doing then?
I don't think so.
Okay.
They're reviewed on a case by case basis, and the the main interest on this one is the watershed size, the depth of it. Uh, the fact that we now have, um, they they all gotta have some sort of public access, we don't really. If we're doing a project and there's no ability for the public to to get at it, I mean, we're a public organization, so. We would still, we wouldn't vacate that parcel, we'd still have the land ownership there as far as that goes, and there would likely be the requirement to restore the the. Fix grass structure. Uh, but then we we just wouldn't be involved with that.
So I guess, the the biggest question I would have is as we move forward with letters or public meeting. I mean, who should we be coordinating with from the county? Should it be Phil, I mean, if we keep him posted on. In terms of participation.
Your office.
Yeah.
County Ditches.
Our office in general, me or John, we've talked with. Yeah, we just want an open line of communication more than anything as we kind of report with this.
I think that's a great idea.
And I just, just to be clear, Brandy, you said that the county could replace the weir outside of DNR? Approval?
Correct.
There there would be permitting requirements.
Yes, yes.
But this project would not have to be part of fixing that structure.
But we would have to get input from the DNR.
Permit.
Permit.
Correct, but this project.
So then, yeah, that was my understatement.
It wouldn't have anything to do with us.
No, no, no.
Yeah, we could, you know, with with our partnership, we could explore funding options, and perhaps ease the the burden on the county, I guess, is what we're. Where where it might be, um, yeah, worth consideration anyway.
Well, and I I just wanna make sure that we're uncovering all options from all angles here today, because. There's quite a bit of legwork left to be done here, you know, so, yeah. So, all right, does anybody have anything else? Here, no, all right, that's all you got, Phil?
All I got.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Nice to meet you guys.
Thank you.
Next up is Mikel. No, we already did Greg.
Catch up, Mikel.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Mikel Johnson, you're the Resources Coordinator. So the first thing that I have for you today is to approve the resolution to adjust the implementation. Of the two thousand twenty-two wage study. Uh, this is specifically regarding the public health nurses as we continue to have, uh, struggles recruiting for that, um. Position, uh, part of the struggle with that position is that the, uh, local hospitals and clinics can pay quite a bit more. Uh, than we can, so we're not even getting applicants really for these positions. Uh, so it's kind of a twofold piece, it's to help with recruiting, and then it's also to help with retention piece. Uh, so this would, if this is approved, it would become effective, uh, April sixteenth, and essentially what it would do is it would change. The public health nurses from C forty-one to C forty-two. Um, doing that was already approved, but that was approved for, uh, happening in January of twenty-four. So this would move up that im- implementation to this year. Uh, budgetarily, it's kind of a wash since we've already been out of these positions and that these positions have been opened, so. So, um, there is that, so it would essentially move the range from twenty-eight eleven. To twenty-nine forty-two for the starting range, um. Yeah, I think that's pretty much everything.
And these positions of all, I know that they've been open since June of last year, or one of them for sure, so. Yeah, I. I don't see an issue with.
I'm not sure, I don't see an issue with it either, I'm just not sure it's gonna make a big difference, I attended a personnel committee meeting with supporting hands. We've been missing a nurse for, uh, li- lie-in and whatever those three count, for six months now. And the hospital, the same thing, it's. I I'm for doing this, but I'm just not sure it's gonna patch everything, you know?
I agree with you completely on that, you know, as Mikel, Diane and I have talked about this, you know, my concern has been, we have this tool out there that we've said we're going to do.
Yep.
And we're not doing it, so, you know, let's go ahead and do it now, and it maybe it helps address it, maybe it doesn't, but at least we're doing everything we can.
And, and, you know, the hospital, you mentioned the hospital, here's the difference, of course, you're working Monday through Friday here, hospital, they're doing shifts. What have we put in up there, Paul, two million dollars in the last two years? We're still using too many travelers, so. I mean, I wish you luck, is what I'm saying, Diane.
Now that we got the optimism.
I'm just, I mean, I hear this every board I'm on, no matter where it is, so.
Yeah.
They're moving at a dollar thirty-one, getting closer to that thirty, which may be the attraction.
Maybe, maybe.
For somebody.
We'll continue to advertise for these openings and hope that.
We didn't have this issue a couple of years ago, did we? I mean, I feel like we, our pay was always, I can remember going to CHB meetings and hearing, well, you're paying more than the other counties and. Or did we, Diane?
We've, we've struggled to fill these positions just in general since they're specialized, any of those really specialized positions, we.
For this long, I don't recall that, I guess, okay.
Usually, we've been ending up starting people up the scale.
That's what I'm saying, we've always started above that, so.
All right, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve a resolution adjusting the implementation of the two thousand twenty-two wage study. Is that what I'm supposed to be doing, am I on the right one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, that's a motion by Commissioner Olberg, I'll hear a second.
Second.
So, second by Commissioner Bretison, and this is a resolution, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Corey, we take the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Shenet?
Yes. All right, motion carried, next item.
Can I ask you a quick question? It's off subject, but it's on my mind now and I'm old, so I gotta say it. FMLA, we don't give them paid time on it, it's just earned time, right?
Well, FMLA itself is unpaid, but we do require that they use their sick and vacation.
That was my question, so are we gonna be getting some new laws coming down?
It's very possible, it's it's looking like that, we've kind of had our eye on that the last couple of years. Um, and then now this year, it looks like it's very possibly going to happen, um, right now, our understanding is is that it would. Work somewhat like unemployment, it would be a separate system.
Okay.
Um, and so it is going through the legislation right now, there is a bill that is going through, um. And so we are watching that, there would be a certain percentage that the county would have to pay.
Diane, so it'd be like a fund?
Yes, exactly, yeah, just like unemployment where we pay, you know, into this statewide fund, and all employers do. Um, and then employees would tap into that, there's a certain amount of wage replacement that comes with it, based on our wages, it'd be sixty percent typically across the board.
So, does it go by the number of employees, kinda like, or or no?
It is a flat percentage based on your gross salaries.
Is that gonna affect every small business too?
Yes, so it is, it is something that, um, it is something that AMC has been very much involved in. Uh, and has spent a lot of time and effort working on counties' behalf to ensure that. You know, the language that is, uh, included in the legislation is is as workable as possible for us, so.
Well, it's not gonna be workable for small businesses, I'll tell you.
It is going to definitely be a challenge across the board, um, it's a priority of the, um, the legislature. And so we see it as something that's going to occur, uh, once it does, there's still some things in flux, so once. Um, the final legislation is passed, if assuming that it will be, uh, we can provide an update to the board about how it's gonna impact the county.
So, and so for us right now, they do FMLA, they're required to use their PTO or vacation.
Yep.
Thank you. Didn't mean to get off subject there.
It's definitely something we have to keep our eye on, so.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so then the next one is, uh, approving the. LALS nonlicensed supervisor contract, so the changes in the contract, uh, three percent cost of living adjustment. For two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, implementing market adjustments in two thousand twenty-three. Um, adding oral reprimands cannot be grieved, language changing, including updated vacation accruals. Court cancellation hours and added good standing language for bank holidays. Updated health insurance language to state that the county employee will each contribute fifty percent to the increase on the total premium. With an additional cap, uh, on the increase if the total premium increases by more than ten percent. Added Juneteenth, and increase the shift if from eighty cents per hour to one dollar per hour.
All right, is there any questions on that? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to ratify the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four LALS nonlicensed supervisor contract.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bretison, uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next contract.
Right, this is our final one, uh, so this is the LALS license contract. Uh, the main changes with this one is a three percent cost of living adjustment for twenty-three and twenty-four. Implementing market adjustments in twenty-three, language changes including updated vacation accruals and adding good standing language. Bank holidays, updated health insurance language that the the county and employee will each contribute fifty percent. To the increase on the total premium with an addition of a cap on the increase if the total premium increases by more than ten percent. Added Juneteenth and increase the shift if from eighty cents an hour to eighty-five cents an hour.
Move to ratify the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four LALS license contract.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg and second by Commissioner Bretison. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four LALS license contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
I think the negotiation team and Andrew and Mikel, I compliment, I think you did a good job, it certainly came out better than. I I don't know if I should say that, because I hear some things around at my meetings, so you guys have done a good job, I think.
Yes, thank you to the commissioners as well, and, um, to the employees that have worked with us on the, on completing these as well.
Yeah, I I'll say that we had a really positive, I think, working relationship with each of the the different bargaining groups as we went through this, it was. Um, you know, it it was a good process.
Good.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Mikel.
Thanks, Mikel. Andrew.
I have just a couple of quick reminders for you, first and foremost, um, tomorrow, we are doing. Uh, recognition for our public works staff to thank them for all their hard work dealing with all this snow, which unfortunately continues.
Which they might be out working on tomorrow.
Hopefully will not be.
Thought about that, will they even be there for lunch?
And so, it would be great if if all the commissioners could come in and help.
And what time is that, I don't think, I think.
Meeting started at eleven-thirty, about noon is, would be a good time for for all of you to show up, so if you can, that would be fantastic, uh, over at the Public Works Building.
Okay.
Uh, also, as a reminder, it's, uh, there's an agenda for it in your packet, but. The Boys and Girls County Day is on April eighteenth, and then, um, we'll be doing lunch at the American Legion at eleven forty-five. Followed by a a short program that will include all of you, so hopefully, as well.
Can I just say one thing about that?
Um, there may be some students that, depending on the timing of.
Board meeting and the timing of when they arrive here, they're gonna come a little bit later that morning, um, to accommodate, uh, viewing court. Um, so, there may be some students that that come in here and just sit and observe what's happening at the meeting, depending on the time. Very good.
All right, we're trying.
So, good reminder for all of us to be on our best behavior.
We always are.
With the youth in two weeks.
Well, Danny is isn't here, so. You may have to text him about that.
Uh, the last thing I just wanted to point out real quick, and we included picture this in the packet as well, but. We received the new, uh, Veterans Transportation Van, and through partnership with the Veterans Council, we had a wrap installed on it to provide a little more. Advertising, uh, and to highlight the program, uh, get information out there as it's driving around the community, so. If you see it out there, please wave, um, for anyone who's interested, they do provide. Uh, rides for veterans to the VA clinics in St. Cloud and, um, in Minneapolis, and, um, they do so. Free of charge for those folks who, uh, who are eligible for it, so, uh, scheduling can be done through the Veteran Service Office.
And sometimes they're still looking for volunteers.
They're always looking for volunteers, you can never have enough volunteers, and so, uh, if you're interested in doing that, they'll take anyone, veteran or not. They're happy to have, uh, the help, so again, contact the Veteran Service Office.
I stopped over and saw Tim the other day in his office, and he showed me the big pictures, he's, they're, they're really proud, all of them over there, very proud of this van that they have.
It's pretty eye catchy, it looks pretty cool.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's council does a lot of, a lot of good work behind the scenes, you know, excellent job, excellent job.
And and again, of course, as a reminder, the Vet Council also purchased and donated the van to the county as well, so it's a very big partnership that we have with the Vet Council for this program.
Yep.
And that concludes my report.
All right, sounds good. Uh, we have some board vacancies, park board.
Yes, we have a couple of vacancies coming up, so if you know people who might be interested in serving on those, they can apply on the websites.
And I see EDA too, I see a Watkins candidate, must have decided not to re-up, so. All right, so we'll have an opening from Watkins, I'll have to look to Phil, um, with that, we are to committee reports. Julie, you've been gone for a long time.
I can handle this, move that. Okay, our last committee reports were given on Tuesday, March twenty-first. Uh, the end of March was thankfully quiet with meetings. I only had the Monday, the twenty-seventh. It was the University of Minnesota Extension Meeting to discuss this year's Farm Family of the Year. And plans are being made to honor this very deserving family at the county fair. Um, I'm afraid the month of April is going to make up for this lull in, in action though, because today now I have this meeting, then we have a personnel meeting this afternoon, there's a U of M meeting, yep, today. Tomorrow, we have appreciation luncheon out at the Highway Garage to thank our snow removal crew members for their hard work. This, yes, has been exceptionally a long winter, and we don't know if it's quite done yet. Uh, then tomorrow at two o'clock, there's an AIS meeting here in this boardroom. And then Thursday, we have another U of M meeting in Hutch. And, I believe that's my report, Andrew mentioned about the upcoming April eighteenth, Boys and Girls Luncheon. Okay, that's it.
All right, thanks Julie.
Yep.
Beth?
So, I, uh, didn't have much, I had a meeting yesterday with Supporting Hands Nurse Partnership. I think I talked, it was a Personnel Committee meeting, a Personnel Committee. We went over, um, some recommendations for, uh, wage settlements, they're not, they're non-union. We've been working on, uh, merit, going to merit pay, that's been a long process, I'm not sure how, if that's gonna continue. And then also, um, we have a new director, Nikki, so, um, we, she's kinda getting her feet wet, doing a good job. And we're looking for a nurse in one area that we've been looking for, for six months, so. They do do well with grants, so I think there's gonna be, uh, I think they have a, uh, Budget Committee co- meeting coming up, and I'm probably, every year, I think, over the last three years, every county's been able to pay in a little less, and I look for that to probably continue, so, that's all I had.
Paul?
Well? Um, we had a CCT meeting. And in the gist of that meeting, we did, we did our usual business activities as far as approving past minutes and agendas and so forth like that. Our, our primary concern is we are in the market for a new transit executive director. I'm on the search committee. I will say this, it was really encouraging for us to have over one, twelve applicants. Of the twelve, there's several, the majority, they're well qualified. So, it's gonna make for really good interviews, and hopefully, we can come out of that with a a good selection. Uh, the other issue is we are now eight buses behind on our new buses. Uh, we have buses that are over three hundred thousand miles. Uh, two buses are getting new engines, one's getting a new transmission. We're at a critical point.
Yeah, we're doing repairs we normally would not do, obviously, and we did a engine a few months ago too, didn't we, so.
And, um, my question, where are these buses going? Well, they're going to places that don't have to retrofit them for wheelchairs and so forth. So hotels, casinos, airport shuttles are getting the buses because it's quick, and we're not. So, um, it's kinda, kinda depressing, because you think of a bus out there that's hauling our folks around the county over to, or to, or to, wherever, and, and they're running in buses that are so rusted on the bottom, we've had to cut out pieces of flooring.
Yeah.
And weld in new to keep them safe, so.
And heaters don't always work, and, I mean, it's really getting critical, for sure.
And, uh, the gentleman from Indot said, he just kinda shrugged his shoulders and said, I'm sorry, I, I don't know what to tell you. I don't, I don't see anything in your future that's gonna bring them in.
So they have no plan, I missed the last CCT meeting, so they have no plan to move it along, or they have, there's nothing.
So.
Scary.
We're looking at some used buses now. We may be better off buying a bus with a hundred thousand miles on it, putting in the equipment we need to replace some of these with three hundred thousand.
I'm surprised that you can find any used buses.
Well.
Oh, they're not fitted for a handicap, I suppose, so you have to add, can you add that?
Yeah, it's not an easy trick, but.
No, I bet not.
Anything can be done, and this is kind of an area of desperation right now. You know, you can put in new motors, you can put in new brakes, you can put in a new transmission, but stuff's just getting loose.
Yeah.
And it's not, not good, we want safe vehicles out there, we don't want, um, unsafe vehicles. I had a UCAP meeting, um, found, uh, something very easy as we had our, our audit. Um, and I looked at it, we have twenty-seven million dollars, uh, budgeted. And our salaries and wages are fifty-four percent of that to distribute to the folks that are needy.
Yep.
So, um, a huge chunk of it just goes to salary and benefits. We're short fifty people. So, you know, that, of course, that fifty-four percent is projecting we were full staffed, of course, but, uh, kind of a scary number when you look at it. All that money and where it's going and all that, it's grants, it's, it's, uh, things that we've gotten, but, um, a lot of money goes into just running that organization before it ever gets to the, to the recipients. The other meeting I had was CPT, uh, our county's providing technology. Um, one of the big discussions there, um, we have some clients in North Dakota. We had six counties. One county, Mercer County is leaving us, um, we have, is it Mercer? I get the two mixed up, Mercer, I think was coming on, Mercer's coming on, and Montrell is leaving. So we will have five counties left. Um, they use a different programming language than what we're trying to convert to, we're trying to get to Java, they still use the RPG. Uh, we only have two RPG programmers with one of those that is going to be retiring next year. So, there was a large discussion among the joint powers about, um, should we continue with North Dakota? And I think the consensus, and it was my feeling, uh, also, but I think the consensus was, we need to focus our money, our assets, on the counties that own this company.
Exactly.
And so, um, they are doing some research now to see if we are gonna continue, we'll discuss it and have a vote on it next month. Um, whether we're gonna continue, the revenue's about two hundred thousand dollars a year that we get from the Dakota counties. But, uh, it's something we really have to look at hard. We've often heard that the HR program is not where it should be. Well, if we're taking care of North Dakota, we can't be working on our own things, so, um, I guess.
Are you getting less complaints from the counties about, are they catching up, or, I mean, or no? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I know what you're asking.
You don't wanna answer?
I haven't heard as many, that does not mean they're not there.
How's it doing here?
Perhaps on strategic.
Well, I, I think the challenge that we face is that while those complaints have existed, the solutions haven't necessarily been put in place because of some, um, maybe some structural issues within the organization that have been working to be addressed, some planning issues, but, you know, it's capacity issue is the big thing. And the, the amount of time that's having to go into rewriting this tax program, um, takes development time away from being able to work on other programs that have issues.
Okay, is that pretty?
That's why, that's why we gotta dedicate our staff.
So, how many, have you hired more staff?
We try.
You can't, same issue there, huh?
We were supposed to have hired an intern, uh, I don't think they got that one started yet. But.
Is Joe ready to come back to Supporting Hands, cause that was probably?
He's having his hands full, though.
I'm sure he is.
I mean, he just, you know, number one, he didn't know anything about what they did.
Right.
So he walked in green.
Right.
Uh, he's a great.
Oh, he's a great guy, but.
Great director, but, you know, he's had to take this thing, baby steps almost, and now he's trying to run and, and so, yeah, it's a challenge for him, and, and, but he's doing a fantastic job, and we really like having him there.
When, when we joined CPT, that was one of the concerns. It sounded like a great deal, but are you gonna get the service and what you need, and are you gonna stay updated?
See, we've developed one piece of software, um, it's Kama, and that's what our, uh, accessories use. They grew up with tablets, they can actually do it there, they don't have to come back and redraw it. I think they just, it moves right into the computer here, so that's ours, we're proprietary on that. And, um, you know, so we've got some things going, but.
Yeah.
Big challenge. Last thing was, I attended the annual joint ditch meeting in Glencoe, and I, I, somehow I didn't see the rest of you there, but.
Cause we weren't.
I might have been, and I might have been in Florida with Julie.
Might, might have been on the little getaway.
But it was, it was really, um, for the most part, I hope I don't offend anybody in the other counties, but it was uneventful. Uh, it was pretty much straightforward, there was no big decisions made or any changes. Everything, we all discussed what we had done last year and what we have on board for this year, John made a nice presentation of what we're gonna be doing this year on the different ditches and.
Cool, what date was that, what was that?
Uh, Friday, uh.
Was that the, was that twenty-four?
That's it, till then.
All right, um, well, let's see, going back to the last board meeting, uh, that same Tuesday is the last board meeting, twenty-first. I was asked to come to Manana to the township meeting, um, to discuss the XL power line, which has got everybody, uh, attention up for sure. Um, and we know we'll have the April twenty-fifth meeting here, uh, with XL to find out more details. Um, lots of variables involved there. Um, and, and, uh, we'll just ask for more information before it gets too far down the road. But, uh, about four different routes proposed from Meeker County. And, um, concern is that we're gonna get a power line, it's just wire, so, um.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
I've asked my township board people, I've invited them to come to that meeting on the twenty-fifth. I'm curious if my colleagues have done the same.
Yep.
I figured you did, Steve, I don't know if anybody else is inviting their township people.
Be downstairs?
Yeah.
And I think the township, so, you know, the, 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 uh, Meeker County Township Association has got word out amongst the town. I, is, uh, Bruce Dickey is probably still.
He is.
On that, and, uh, I can reach out to him and just make sure he's aware of it too, so he gets it out to all the townships. But I talked to several, and the city of Eden Valley, so.
Okay.
Um, so that's coming up, uh, then on the twenty-second, me and Andrew went down to St. Paul to, uh, testify for some bonding money for the Cordell's project, just with, uh, Representative Erdahl, we'll see how that comes out, uh, was a.
What was your feeling?
I thought it actually went way well, they asked a few questions of us and stuff, so a lot of times, nobody was able to say anything, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, I mean, it's broader political issues outside of our specific.
See, they, something came to the committee that they threw out on the bond, and there was a big fight, I didn't, of course, because somebody voted wrong. That was in the minority, so then the majority, and I really, I mean, this is just so ridiculous, it was on TV.
All right.
I watch it for about five minutes, and then I just walk away.
Well, if you wanna watch a really good one, we can send you the link of Stephen.
Well, that would be good.
How long did you have?
Five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. No, it went well, but, um, and then on, I had Grove City Care meeting on the twenty-seventh. And, uh, also had AMC update that day, um, but Grove City Care, everything seems to be moving along right now. We're, um, working on just a audit of last year's books, um. Um, they did apply for their DH, their bi- their biannual, so a two-year, a hundred thousand dollar DHS grant, so that's always a little bit nerve-wracking for the ladies over there when they go through that, but, uh, hopefully that comes through. They always do a great job, so I'm confident they'll get that, but, um, back to AMC a little bit, um, the House, the Minnesota House has proposed, uh, county program aid with an inflator at a hundred million dollar level. Um, AMC, uh, wanted like a hundred and fifty million, um, but, and I think last year we were at thirty million from the, in the governor's budget. Um, this year, he's around forty, so, but there is, seems to be pretty good momentum towards the county program aid and that hundred million dollar mark with an inflation area factor on there. And that also is for LGA for the cities as well, um, a hundred million, so that, they're kinda optimistic right now that, uh, something good is gonna come out of that. I do have in my box here that I used a lot of ink highlighting FMLA costs. Um, that's been a huge discussion down in St. Paul. And I know the Eden Valley Superintendent, uh, pulled me over one day in, in the city and just, we talked a little bit. And he said by the time they're done, they're gonna have to give, uh, cause there's increased funding towards education, but by the time they're done, they're gonna have to give bus drivers and everybody all these benefits, he said we're actually gonna go backwards.
That's what I read too.
And that's been a pretty, um, uh, common theme with everything when it comes to FMLA and the cost that it's gonna incur, um, so that's not good. On the, on the public safety side of things, um, the state is looking at some things that are kinda bigger items as, uh, inter- interest state transfer funding, so for these departments that have to transfer prisoners or go get them the state or two away, um, they're looking at a formula for some funding for that. And also, uh, body cam and the storage, the, the funding for the storing of the body cam video is a big deal. Um, so those are a couple of things that it sounds to be pretty good, um, um, support for, um, through the legislature, so there'll be more to come on that. Uh, then otherwise, other than that, I went to AMC up in Nisswa to their annual meeting, or annual conference up in Nisswa. Um, I hadn't been there in five years, um, and we actually had our board meeting, had a meeting at the beginning, and a meeting at the end. Um, so I, then, I, I wasn't, uh, registered for the conference, but and they said, well, you gotta be here anyway, so they registered me for that. Uh, but a good, good, uh, program, um, basically, you know, navigating, working through difficult situations, um, that seems to be the theme, and, and, uh, had a good speaker, good presenter for a couple of days, and then we had AMC board meeting at the end, so. And that's about all I got.
Question?
Yes.
You sent something out about a seminar or something, did I read that?
In the May?
I wanna have conversations with Danny, I mean difficult people.
Something like that, I figured we didn't need any training in that regard.
Uh, there's four options across the state, um, I signed up for the one in St. Paul, it worked best with my schedule, it's in May.
I know, he does that to me when I am here.
I still have a re-mail, I just got a thought of it right now and after.
Phil signed up for that one as well, so.
I got it.
Is it a four hour, six hour?
I think it's like two hours.
Is it online, or do you have to, is it in person?
There's limited attendance as well.
I don't drive to St. Paul.
Where, where is that one?
There's four different locations, the one that I'm going to is at the MCIT office.
Oh, okay. All right.
So I had a conversation yesterday about deputies, and we're still down with Andrew.
We're, yeah, we're down two right now.
Any hope in sight, or do we know, or? It's kinda getting to a, it's kinda scary. Also, I see the sheriff has posted his two thousand twenty-two activity report on his Facebook page, the one we used to get here ahead of time, so.
I'm sure the chief deputy would be happy to give it to us.
Well, normally, we get it before it goes public, which is fine, but I'm just saying, if you'd like to see, I guess you could.
All right, do we have anything else to come before the board?
Um, what are the recognition out of the highway department, or what are we doing exactly?
Uh, we're going to, um, well, we're gonna have a lunch, and so.
Not you, you'll be cooking.
No, that's fine, I just went down there, for sure, we were doing, I wanted to make sure.
I thought we were doing pizza.
We are doing pizza.
And be there at noon, before quarter to?
I think I have a meeting, so I may not be there.
Yep, do you need help, are we helping to serve or anything, or, no, just come and socialize?
Yep.
I can do whatever. Oh, I like that one.
All right, well, we rattled on on long enough here today, so I'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Ten oh two.
What, what was on the, I never even looked at the agenda, we were, I know.